Good evening, everybody. Our June 24, 2024 meeting is called to order. We will have prayer and then pledge of allegiance by Councilwoman at large, Smith. Will we stand for the prayer and pledge? Let us pray. Gracious God, our Father, we come again thanking you for this day, for life, and we're so grateful for it. Thank you for leading and guiding us tonight as we are seeking to, we are ever seeking to improve our city. So if there's dialogue, let it be done in a way that we may disagree, but that we're not disagreeable. We may disagree, but we do it in a respectful way. So we thank you for guiding us. We even pray as we are entering into some very hot days that you will keep those who are residents and those who live here, keep them safe, and even allow us to plan accordingly. We thank you even for looking over the events we have going on this weekend, that you would give us safety and protection that people will enjoy, but they would do it in a way where it's clean and nobody is injured and everybody has fun. Give you the glory and praise now. In your son, Jesus' name, we ask. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Councilwoman at Large, for leading us in the pledge. Next item is the reading and approval of our minutes from our June 10, 2024 meeting.
May I make a motion that minutes June 10 be dispensed with and that they be adopted?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to dispense with the reading of the minutes to adopt them as they have been recorded. Any comment about this particular motion? All righty, seeing none, Mrs. Stacy Rolcarvo.
Eli.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
P T.
Yes.
All right, that motion carries. Next two items we have dealing with planning and zoning, and Chantrell has explained both of these before. I think the language is pretty straightforward with both of these ordinances, and the first one is going to be read by Councilman Nielsen.
Thank you, Mayor. This is for final, as you mentioned, so I'll read it in title only. Ordinance number 15 of 2024, and ordinance amending ordinance number 64 of 2001 by changing zoning classification of property described as follow to rezone the following lot containing 6.3 acres being track B of division of lands in section 72, 73, 74, 87, 105, 110, and 133, Township 9 North, Range 7 West, as shown on plat in number 135765, and the physical address is 8151 Highway 1 bypass, and that's for the rezoning of fauna, and I move to adopt ordinance number 15 of 2024.
Let the record reflect this highway, 8158 Highway 1 bypass.
Did I say that wrong?
It's our second emotion.
All right, motion made and seconded with the correction being made. Not the best picture we have, but I think what we're talking about is across the tracks over there, maybe from Archie's. Is that kind of the area, Mrs. Walker?
It's right behind the DOTD.
Okay, so we're a little bit back, so that wouldn't be a good picture. So she'll be back this way, closer to Natchez than what the picture indicates, okay? So I tried to give you some visual of where that is, okay? Yeah, but the DOTD, I think workstation is a little bit, gonna be back south of where this picture is, so. But again, they're trying to rezone is pretty straightforward, as Councilman Nielsen read. The dream, the hope, the plan is, and I remember saying the last time this was on the agenda, which is the previous meeting, that they have done a good job, particularly Mrs. Walker in securing some funding. It's really hard fought, hearts fought after funding from the state, competitive, challenging to get, and they've won over a million dollars. Is that correct? Yeah, yeah, so over a million dollars to start with not just a shelter, but an adoption center and the vision that they have for that, which I think is great. So, and so this has to happen to move forward with the project. Is there any additional comment here? Mrs. Walker, did you need to add something to it, or that's pretty much good? All right, seeing none, Mrs. Stacy Rolcarvo.
Eli.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
P T.
Yes.
All right, that motion carries. All right, next item is also for finals, as I mentioned earlier, and is read by Councilwoman at Large Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. This is ordinance number 016, which is an ordinance to amend and reenact section 8.1 of chapter 8 of the Code of Ordinances entitled Building and Building Regulations. Said amendment being made to reflect current building codes as official building codes of the City of Natchitoches, Louisiana, providing for advertising, further providing for severability, and further providing for repealer and effective date of ordinance. This ordinance was introduced on June the 10th and was published in the Natchitoches Times on June the 15th, and I move for adoption of ordinance number 016.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Again, Chantrell in her absence, she did state this at the last meeting, but to amend and reenact section 8-1 of chapter 8 of the Code of Ordinances and dispels it out council in your packet, if you will. Basically, this is something that, the way I see it, is your folks who are builders into residential building, maybe commercial building, so this really helps them and guides them in terms of what code are we following in terms of plumbing, in terms of electrical work, and things of that nature. So, don't know if there's any additional comment about this?
Keeps us current with state code.
All right. All right, seeing no additional comment, Mrs. Stacy Rolcarvo.
Eli.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
P T.
Yes.
All right, that motion carries. Before we go, Your Father, I should have read this at the beginning, but please take a moment to silence your cell phones during the meeting. The City Council encourages public participation. Comments are limited to three minutes per speaker. However, this time limit may be reduced if there are numerous speakers on a particular item. To ensure efficient proceedings, all persons addressing the City Council shall state their name and shall speak in a civil and courteous manner. Speakers shall address the agenda topic only to which they are speaking on and shall not be repetitive. Members of the audience, please respect the rights of others and refuse or do not create noise or other disturbances so as to disrupt or disturb persons who are addressing City Council, council members who are speaking or otherwise impede the orderly conduct of the meeting. Again, thanks for your adherence to those instructions. All right, we have a couple ordinances for introduction. The first one is read by Councilman Harrington.
This is ordinance 17 of 2024, an ordinance authorizing the mayor of the City of Natchitoches to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Natchitoches Community Alliance Foundation doing business as Natchitoches Economic Development Alliance, or NEDA, which said memorandum provides for services to be provided by the Natchitoches Economic Development Alliance, providing for a one-year term, providing for advertising, further providing for severability, and further providing for repealer and effective date of ordinance. And I'll read it in part. Whereas the city and the development alliance both have an interest in promoting economic growth, commerce, and tourism in the city and parish of Natchitoches, Louisiana, and whereas further, the development alliance is strategically positioned to support the city and its efforts to grow its tax base by aligning resources and tools to foster and expanding and growing business and industrial sector, and the city desires to assist the development alliance and its goal to become the voice of economic development for Natchitoches Parish. Whereas further, development alliance is in need of funds to move forward in its plan to promote economic development in the city and parish of Natchitoches, and the city desires to provide funds in exchange for services to be provided by the development alliance. And under the terms of the agreement, the development alliance provide the following services to the city. Maintain updated professional and useful economic development website for one-stop information, be the lead contact for economic development requests for proposals and information, lead the evaluation and development of business and industrial sites, serve as local liaison for business retention and expansion visits in conjunction with LED and LEP, and provide expertise, experience, and leadership for special projects and initiatives of the administration. And in exchange for the above services, the city agrees the following pay schedule: $45,000 for the fiscal year of June 2024 to May 2025. The term of this agreement is one-year term, and this for introduction only.
All righty, thank you, Councilman Harrington. We do have with us Mrs. Laura Lyles, a new to the City of Natchitoches, Mrs. Brittany McCoy. I want you all to come forward, one or both of you, to do it. Yes, ma'am.
Hello, everyone. It's good to see y'all tonight. Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers, for entertaining the continuation of our agreement. I think we've done a lot of good work with you all over the past few years since we've been involved in NEDA, and we have more to come, so I very much appreciate y'all's consideration of the continuation. So I put a few things in front of you tonight. I'll be as brief as possible. Did want to talk about a few things that we've been able to accomplish over the past year of our agreement, and then some things that we can look forward to moving forward with your support. So as you all recall, in February, we were here and the City Council unanimously adopted the Natchitoches Next Plan. This was huge for us, and we have, prior to that adoption and since that adoption, been working continuously to use it to attract business and investment in those five districts that have been identified, in addition to other things, as you all are familiar, like transportation, residential development throughout. Those are all very big, longstanding projects that take a lot of time and energy, and so we were very happy to see that come to fruition in February. I did also put in front of you, we've tried to be champions for that plan and just educating and informing the public about what it is, what all it includes. We have some of our committee members here that helped put that plan together. We highlighted them in our 2023 annual report. This is an annual report of both the Chamber and the Economic Development Alliance. For those who are unfamiliar, the Chamber and NEDA have our own MOU between those organizations, and the Chamber staff manage the Economic Development Alliance. And so our annual report for both organizations are there. You can see some of the things we've worked on, and the Natchitoches Next Plan is highlighted there, as well as in our Explore Natchitoches Community Guide. So we're trying to help spread the word about that plan, the importance of it, and help everybody gain access to it through natchitochesnext.com, which has, I believe, the most recently updated, adopted version of the plan. So moving forward, one of the first things in that CEA was a new website. We've been working on this new website for what feels like years, and we are this close to having it done. I'm hoping by the end of this summer, we have a bright, beautiful, youthful, engaging new website that is gonna really change the game for us, for attraction of talent, of businesses. It's gonna be a great resource for our community, which frankly, I'll talk about ourselves, our website hasn't been that for some time. And so with NEDA and the Chamber coming together, this was really an opportunity for us to invest in that and serve our community in a stronger way. So look forward to the launch of gonatchitoches.com, hopefully by the end of this summer. That's a shared expense between NEDA and the Chamber, and it's not a small expense, but it's going to have a huge return on investment for all of us, I think. Also, we have, as the mayor mentioned, invested in our personnel. Ms. Brittany McCoy has joined our staff. This is a brand-new position for the Chamber, and we're so happy that we have made it to the point where that is an option for us, because it's a lot of work that is being done and pumped out of our office. And so Brittany brings with her a wealth of knowledge, experience, education background in hospitality management, and tourism, and economic development. She's educated and trained in both of those areas, and also in grant writing. And so we've had a really good time looking for grant opportunities and speaking with some other community partners throughout the parish, really, for opportunities for collaboration, because it takes money to make all of these things really come to fruition, as you all know, and support. So we're really excited to have her on our staff, and I hope you all will have a chance to meet her and get to know her and work with her. I know there are several of you who have, and some of the folks within the city have already met and are working with her, just to kind of enhance everything that we're doing. So very much appreciate your support for things like that. And then, lastly, Mayor, it was very important to you that this organization was properly kind of financially stood up, and so I included in your packets there some information about our alliance and who all is investing in that. And so we are continually looking for new investors, not a plug, but just for your information, we are continually looking for investors in the organization. The more financial support we have, the more sustainability we have, the more we can really grow the impact of what we're doing and really see some, where the rubber meets the road on the work that we're doing. Like I said, they're very long, tedious tasks, and it takes a long time to kind of see the fruit, but we really just appreciate y'all's partnership, communication, and I'm looking forward to continuing to see good things. Does anybody have any questions for me?
Laura, just for the record, state your first and last name, please.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Laura Lyles, President and CEO of the Natchitoches Area Chamber of Commerce, Executive Director for the Natchitoches Economic Development Alliance.
Right.
I did forget one thing. This is just for information. This is a work in progress. It's not a public document, it's just internal, and it's a draft at the moment, but with adding some new staff and restructuring the Chamber, we're kind of looking at what our organizational chart looks like, our org chart, and you'll see here kind of all the things that we have coming out of our office. Some of these are upcoming, but most of them are happening every day, and so you can kind of see where the work that you're asking us to do is taking place, who's responsible for them, who our teams are, what the committees look like, and all that kind of structural information. So that's just another piece of information for you.
Any comments or questions, council? All right, look, we appreciate the work. Again, this is just being introduced, so certainly if there are any questions, please reach out to me, or I think everybody knows Laura well as well, okay?
Thank you.
All right, thanks for being here. Good to see you again, Mrs. McCoy as well. All righty, next item, excuse me, also for introduction, and it's read by Councilman P T.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number 018 of 2024, an ordinance authorizing the execution of a memorandum of understanding between the City of Natchitoches and the Boys and Girls Club of Acadiana, whereby the Boys and Girls Club will operate within the Ben Johnson Auditorium, providing educational and recreational programming for a period of three years, providing for funding from the city to the Boys and Girls Club programming, and providing for other matters related thereto. Whereas the Boys and Girls Club of Acadiana is a Louisiana nonprofit corporation that proposes to provide activities and education opportunities to the youth of Natchitoches in five areas: character and leadership development, education and career development, health and life skills, the arts, and sports, fitness, and recreation. Whereas the club has proposed to provide the above activities with the goal of enhancing the development of youth by instilling a sense of competence, a sense of usefulness, a sense of belonging, and a sense of power or influence. Whereas the club intends to provide activities at the Ben Johnson Auditorium located at 400 MLK Drive, Natchitoches, Louisiana. Whereas the City Council is of the opinion that the activities offered by the club for youth will be beneficial to the health, welfare, and safety of the citizens of the City of Natchitoches. Whereas, under the general law and the Home Room Charter of the City of Natchitoches, the city has the right, power, and authority to promote, protect, and preserve the general welfare, safety, health, peace, and good order of the city, including the right to provide for recreation and activities. Whereas the city is interested in and is empowered to promote recreation and activities of the young people through wholesome activities through the club, which may be contracted for, and the city is desirous of cooperating with the private sector in organizing and running activities for the youth of the city and the area. Whereas the City of Natchitoches and the club have negotiated a memorandum of understanding for a three-year period with annual contribution from the city to the club of $25,000 as consideration for the programs and activities for the youth of the city.
This is for introduction only. All right, thank you, Councilman P T. We got Mr. Brian Ford with the Boys and Girls Club of Acadiana, who's here with us today, so I want you to come, sir. Please state your first and last name, and you can begin your presentation.
Thank you. Thank you for that long introduction as well. My name's Brian Ford, Director of Development for Boys and Girls Clubs of Acadiana. My job is to make sure that all of our clubs throughout our area have the resources that they need to operate. We are obviously here in Natchitoches, but we're also in Lake Charles, Lafayette, Iberia, St. Landry, Vermillion, and will soon be opening in Crowley, which is in Acadia Parish. First of all, I want to thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council, for your time this afternoon, your support, and the investment that you're making to provide, honestly, hope and opportunity to the youth of this community. I think that's very important. You may or may not know, but Boys and Girls Club started in 1860. It started as Boys Club by four women in Hartford, Connecticut, to get boys off the street. So that's how it started, 1860. Our organization started in 1970 as Boys Club. Girls became introduced into the program in the 90s. That's when it became Boys and Girls Club, and Boys and Girls Club has been here in Natchitoches now for three years. Can you go to the next slide, please? Okay, appreciate you. So we serve all school-age kids, and I promise to be as brief as possible. I'm not gonna read every word on any page, on every page, but we serve kids school-age six and up. Coach D does an amazing job of providing consistency. Her and her staff provide consistency every day. We have paid staff. That paid staff gives us the consistency. We love volunteers. We'll supplement with volunteers. In a few minutes, we'll talk about some of the different groups and entities that we have coming into the club to enhance the program, but that paid staff gives us the consistency. We don't have to close down because we're only operating off of volunteers, and it's summer, volunteers aren't vacation. We have to take the club away. That's something that we never want to do. I say the club offers five things that I think probably most of all of us in this room would want, kids want, but that's fun, safety, opportunities, recognition, and expectations. That's the five things. Unfortunately, it's the same five things that make gangs successful. People want their needs met, whether positively or negatively, but the club is there to meet these needs in a positive way. So you serve, this is organizationally. I do have some stats that we'll get into quickly in a minute, more specific to Natchitoches, but we served over 3,000 youth. That number's actually 34, 31. When we put this together at the beginning of the year, we were still waiting on a little bit more stats to come out, because we opened a second club in Iberia Parish this year, and it took a little while to get those stats. But kids come to the club for different reasons. Some kids might come because they need a strong male role model in their lives. Some might come for the meal that we provide every day. Every child that comes to the club gets a healthy meal and a breakfast this summer at no extra cost to that child every day after school around 4:30. They also get a healthy, hot meal to ensure that nobody goes home hungry. We know that many of our club members have reported, you know, that they have struggles with conflict, so we have a lot of programs in our clubs. We're a youth development program. We're not just throw out a ball, but, you know, conflict resolution is one of those programs. We do surveys called NYOI, National Youth Outcome Initiative Surveys. That's a survey that Boys and Girls Clubs of America has put research into, working with different universities to make sure it's a good, sound, structured survey. That's how we know that the club is working. That's how we know what programs that we need to offer. That's how we know that the kids are having a good time, that the staff are offering what we need to do, is through those surveys. Here's just how we're kind of structured. So as I mentioned, we opened in the 70s, but current club locations, started in Lafayette in 1981. We're opening Crowley soon. All money raised in each of these communities stays in the community. It's always a question I get. So Crowley wanted a club. First of all, community has to want a club. We're not, we don't just go put clubs because we want to have a club somewhere. The community has to want that club. They have to get the money to start the club and have a three-year commitment, because we don't want to put a club and then have to take it away. And, you know, kudos to this community here for understanding the importance. I know some of you sitting in this room have actually, you know, personally invested in the Boys and Girls Club as well, and that's essential to keep the program going. In addition to the city funding, we have some other big entities, Royal Martin, International Paper, Alliance Compressor, several banks in the community. So I just want you guys to know that by no means are we expecting you to hold the burden of supporting the Boys and Girls Club, that it is a community club and the community is supporting it. Everything we do really falls into these three outcomes. So academic success, we're helping the kids with their homework every day. Ultimately, we want kids to either, to on-time grade progression. We know in third grade, if kids are not on reading level in third grade, they're at risk of not graduating. So we're monitoring on-time grade progression. We want you to graduate from high school and then either enter the workforce, the military, or some type of post-secondary education. Healthy lifestyles, we have the Legacy Garden behind the club. We have some partnerships with other entities providing healthy programs, but if we can get kids to avoid risky behaviors, adopt a healthy lifestyle that makes them better employees, less likely to have childhood obesity and those things. And then finally, good character and citizenship. We do a lot of community service projects. Statistically, if a child's involved in their community, they're less likely to be involved in the juvenile justice system. So here's some stats. I would just sum this slide up with why. Why do we need a Boys and Girls Club? Kids are going home every day unsupervised. The club fills that role, safe, supervised place. 308 youth were served in Natchitoches in 2023. You know, childhood obesity, we just mentioned that, and then we did a survey to caregivers. These caregivers were our club parents, people who utilized the Boys and Girls Club and all that, and got some feedback from them. One of my favorite stats is every dollar invested in the Boys and Girls Club has a return of $11.80 in economic impact. I'll say it simple, it's cheaper to invest in these kids now than to invest in them later when they're involved in the juvenile justice system. So here's some pictures. These are Natchitoches kids at the Natchitoches Club. You see the percentages that came from those NYOI surveys that we talked about. So we know that 82% of our club members believe that they can make a difference in their community. 93% of the kids get to explore new things at the club. 85% feel that they can stand up for what's right, and they're getting all that from our programming. We charge a one-time fee of $25 to join the Boys and Girls Club for the school year, a second one-time fee of $25 for the summer, so $50 a year. Obviously, by no means does that cover expenses, but that does give kids a sense of buy-in, belonging, and ownership, which is really what we're after. We're open during the hours that kids are most at risk, and that's about it on that slide. Ways to support, you know, we're always engaging with our parents. We have parental engagement. We feel that's important, to have that three-way relationship with the child, the parent, and the club. We're always looking for volunteers, as I mentioned. Strong male role models are important. Sometimes it's as simple as throwing a ball to a child, but there's helping with homework. If you have a special interest that you want to come in, we're always open to all those things. We're always looking for employees. We always add more staff for the summer. A lot of our employees are college students, so there's some turnover as they come and go, and their class schedule changes and things like that. That's me. And then just in conclusion, if you look at that stat sheet that I passed around, if you go to the side where there's the blue boxes on the right-hand side, so during the school year, you'll see AS, so that's after school, and then you'll see S, which is summer. So in 2023, the club was averaging 50 kids a day after school, well, 45 after school in 2023. It's 50 now, and it continues to grow. Last summer, we had 108 kids a day. This summer, we're up to 117 kids a day. You see that we serve 10,095 meals. Again, that's Natchitoches-specific, over 10,000 meals. We, you know, some- We, you know, summer's an important time, there's no school lunch, so our kids getting to eat in the summertime, yes, if they come to the Boys and Girls Club. Just in conclusion, lots of partnerships. We have partnerships with the library, the Bookmobile comes on Mondays, and they also do a craft with kids. We partner with the Kane River National Heritage Center, the Ben Johnson Education Center with the Legacy Cafe in the Garden, and Northwest State University, specifically mainly the basketball program, but they send a lot of, that's important, that's where we get that male interaction. If you flip the sheet over at the bottom, you'll see some of the financial literacy programming that we do with some of the area banks, the mentors with the university, and community service projects, all those type of things. In the middle section there, that's just some organizational stats, it's not Akadish-specific. But I'll conclude with that. Does anybody have any questions?
I'd just say, Mr. Ford, if you've got some extra stat sheets, I don't think they made it up here, but...
We're the council over here, I think they got it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I passed him, sorry.
Oh, it's all good.
Yeah, it's okay.
It's all good, thank you, sir.
I'm so sorry.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Okay.
Thanks.
Hey, man, I mean, you guys got a great program going, I'm sure, I mean, your numbers are, kids are coming back and everything, you're pretty much staying full. Is that what's happening over there?
Yep, the club, the club does have a waiting list. I spoke to Coach D before I came in here. We have bus transportation, bringing kids to, Senator Louie helped us find some funding for bus transportation to get kids to the club every day after school. Transportation's always a logistic thing, buses bring kids home, but how do we get them to the club? So we worked through that that barrier for the school year, and then in the summertime, we're open a lot more hours from 7:30 in the morning all the way to 5:30 in the evening, so it's a little bit easier for kids to to get to us, as parents can drop them off on the way to work and different things like that.
Okay. Yeah.
Great program, great organization.
Hey, look, our doors are always open. You don't need an invitation, you don't need an invite to come. You know where the, we're located in the Ben Johnson Center, stop by anytime.
Yep, yep, I've been there before, and my wife's sorority, I think does some, some work with you all. Chief Wynn was over there one day. We were doing a demonstration with one of the firefighters and some bunker gear, I think it was. Yeah, so they really, really liked that and appreciated it. So, hey, just want y'all to continue to do the great work you're doing. Yeah, Council, I don't know if you have anything for Mr. Ford?
No, glad you're all here.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work. It's an awesome program.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ford. And I will say, Council, I sent you an email today with, we applied for the, what is it? Mobility hubs, but we also applied for a teen center, which, talking to Coach D, and I know she's a recognizable face around here, but she was the one giving the guidance on the teen center, just trying to reach that teen demographic and see how we can curb some behavior, give them positive influence, give them some youth development. So that's what we're trying to do with that. So we didn't necessarily get that opportunity, but we're still looking for other ways, and certainly Coach D is important to helping us make that a reality, so. But she's been dynamic, and we just appreciate everybody who has contributed to make this a reality. All righty, again, that's for introduction, so we'll see you at our next meeting, first meeting in July. Again, thank you for being here today, Mr. Ford. All right, next, we've got a few resolutions. The first one being read by Councilwoman Washington Eli.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution number 0502024, a resolution authorizing the mayor to advertise and accept the bids for a bucket truck for the City of Nagus Utility Department, bid number 0668, whereas the city wished to advertise the bids for the bucket truck for the City of Nagus Utility Department, bid number 0668, and whereas the sealed proposal shall be addressed to the City of Nagus Office of the Director of Correction Purchasing, 1400 Sabine Street, Nagus, Louisiana, 71457, receive the Nagus, the City of Nagus Purchasing Department, 1400 Sabine Street, Nagus, Louisiana, whereas the City of Nagus would accept the seal, they turn the bids for the bucket truck until 2:00 P. M. Tuesday, July 30 of 2024, at the city, at the Office of the Director of Purchasing of 1400 Sabine Street, and whereas the bid will be publicly open and read aloud at the location and time here and above, and whereas to receive a proposal from committee members, considering Carissa Brown Smith, Director of Finance, Ed Lee, Director of Purchasing, Matt Anderson, Utility Department, Eddie Harrington, Councilmen's, and review to make a recommendation of the bids, now therefore be resolved that the Council of the City of Nagus is legal session convening the Honorable Mayor Ronnie Williams, being hereby authorized and empowered to the rate to order out publication of the budget, and I move to adopt Resolution Number 0502024, second.
All right, motion has been made and seconded. So this is pretty straightforward, simple resolution. We've seen these before, when we have equipment over certain, projected to be over certain costs, and, I mean, you see what a bucket truck does, it's what our employees in the utility department will use to address and fix problems. And actually, that top right picture is from Akadish. We also, I think that was a Flag Day one year, 2019, I believe, but, but yeah, the practical use is the bottom left picture, and I know everybody certainly appreciate their work. These, I think mostly men, Matt, are called out sometimes in the middle of the night on weekends.
Yeah, we do have a few ladies, but most of them.
Got a few ladies, okay, called out. Matt, I mean, I know you know we have to kind of forecast this out, so.
Yeah, this is to replace a bucket truck that's on lease, that the leases expire. So we've kind of moved, we're moving away from leasing trucks and just buying them. I think it's more financially stable for us to to own the truck a few years, once it's paid off, rather than just keep turning over at least.
Makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, okay, so look, any, this is a bid process, but do we have any idea? No, that's okay, you don't have to answer that. Any comments or questions? All righty, okay, I mean, it's something we need to do, the work we have to do, all righty? Seeing that there's no additional comment, roll call vote, Mr. Stacey.
Eli.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
P T.
Yes.
All right, that motion carries. Next resolution is read by Councilwoman Nielsen.
This is, I may need a little help on this one, the support documents may or may not be correct. They say airport. I'm gonna click it and see, but this Resolution Number 34 of...
Should be 54, I want, you don't give me that.
Oh, you got it, okay.
Thank you. Resolution Number 51 of 2024 is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute change order number one to the agreement between the City of Nagus and AmeriSeal of Ohio Incorporated to rehabilitate runway 17-35 taxiway and apron at Nagus Regional Airport, bid number 0658, whereas the City of Nagus awarded the bid to AmeriSeal of Ohio Incorporated by ordinance number 33 of 2023 in the amount of $1,093,865 to rehabilitate runway 1735 taxiway and apron at the Nagus Regional Airport, and whereas on June 10, 2024, contractor issued change order number one, fully described and attached Exhibit 1, and whereas the contract sum will be increased by this change order number one in the amount of $10,000, and the revised contract total will be $1,103,865, and whereas the contract time will be increased by this change order number one in the amount of 192 calendar days, and the revised contract time will be 217 calendar days, and whereas the project engineer, Jonathan Farmer of KSA Engineers Incorporated, has recommended this change order, and whereas the city is of the opinion that change order number one is in the best interest of the city, and now therefore be it resolved... By the Council of the City of Nagus in legal session convening that the Honorable Ronnie Williams Jr., Mayor B N, is hereby authorized, empowered, and directed to execute the reference change order number one to the agreement between the City of Nagus and the contractor, and I move to adopt Resolution Number 51 of 2024, second.
Motion made to second it. It's actual look, and you'll see this picture again on the next slide because it's the next resolution is dealing with runway, I want to say 1735, but, okay, so you see a $10,000, Councilwoman Nielsen read a $10,000 increase. Ed and I talked earlier, and as with these federally funded airport projects, it's totally paid for, the change order is covered by the, through the grant, was that like that?
That's correct.
Okay. And Ed, I don't know, what is it, is it just a time component of the $10,000?
No, sir, it was additional crack sealing. Once the project began, it was bid, part of it was bid based on the amount of cracks in the asphalt, the pavement, and once the project actually began working, there were additional cracks that needed to be sealed, so it's a result of the additional cracks.
Okay, good. All right, regional, did regional do this work, or who did it?
No, AmeriSeal of Ohio.
Okay.
They travel all over the country doing this very specialized work.
She deals with the cracks, so no repavement or anything, just...
No, sir, and that picture is actual photographed at Nagus Regional Airport. You can see every, the colors are bright and crisp.
Looks really good, looks really good.
Yeah, that's, that's a result of this project. So they put a coating, the seal coat, on top of the asphalt to extend the life. The FAA would rather do a seal coat and extend the life and get a few years extra before you go so far as milling and overlaying, and then when you seal coat, everything would be black, so you get to come back and re-stripe the entire airport, all the pavement at the airport, and that's why you see the bright white stripes, kind of reminds me of official uniform, but everything is brand-new and crisp as far as this project goes.
That's good.
Yep, 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 yep. Okay, thanks for the explanation, Ed. I think it's really clear how you explained it. Any comments or questions here?
Waiting on Ed's comment.
Yep, that's what, you kind of...
Yeah, I just said, I wanted to kind of take, take the thunder from him a little bit.
But is this, does the city have to pay any of this? None.
All right, all right, okay, all right.
It's my favorite thing.
He's consistent.
He's consistent, I want to make sure he got that in.
All righty, no additional comment? All right, Mr. Stacey, roll call vote.
Eli.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
P T.
Yes.
All right, that motion carries. So we got the same picture for this one, and it's the same area, but this is substantial completion, as we do when projects are at their end, they're complete, we have this. So this one is read by Councilwoman Elar Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. This is Resolution Number 052 of 2024, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a certificate of substantial completion to the contract between the City of Nagus and AmeriSeal of Ohio to rehabilitate, to rehabilitate runway 1735 taxiway and apron at the Nagus Regional Airport. This is bid number 0658, whereas the City of Nagus has contracted with AmeriSeal of Ohio Inc. Incorporated to rehabilitate runway 17-35 taxiway and apron at Nagus Regional Airport, bid number 0658, and whereas this work has been completed, and whereas a substantial completion inspection has been performed by KSA engineer Jonathan Farmer and a representative of the City of Nagus, and they find the project to be complete, now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the City of Nagus in legal session convening that the Honorable Ronnie Williams Jr., Mayor B N, is hereby authorized, empowered, and directed to execute the reference certificate of substantial completion for Armistead, AmeriSeal of Ohio Inc., and I move for adoption of Resolution Number 052 of 2024, second.
Motion made to second it. Ed, I think you pretty much covered, did you cover everything in the previous resolution?
It just closes, officially closes out the project.
Okay, and that, just what he explained earlier in terms of the, it's a sealing or seal project, is that how you say it?
Seal coat.
Seal coat, seal coating, okay. All right, any comment or question about this particular item? All right, seeing none, Mr. Stacey, roll call vote.
Eli.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
P T.
Yes.
All right, that motion carries. Okay, Councilman Harrington is reading the next resolution.
Resolution 53 of 2024, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a maintenance agreement, including mowing and litter pickup with the State of Louisiana Department of Transportation and Development Office of Engineering, beginning July 1, 2024, through June 30, 2025, and whereas DOTD lacks sufficient personnel and equipment to perform mowing and litter collection on a routine and continuing basis, and wishes to enter into agreement with the City of Nagus to perform maintenance directly related to mowing and litter collection on the state roadways within the City of Nagus, and this agreement applies only to the roads and streets identified on DOTD's list of routes for maintenance agreement, which shall include all right-of-ways and road shoulders associated with the state roadways, and the City of Nagus shall be reimbursed by DOTD the amount of $875 per cycle per mile for interstate roadways, $500 per cycle per mile for divided state roadways, and $250 per cycle per mile for undivided state roadways. And the total mileage to be maintained by the City of Nagus pursuant to this agreement is 24.88 miles, of which zero are interstate roadways, 4.4 miles are divided state roadways, and 20.48 are undivided state roadways. For the total maximum amount for which the city may claim reimbursement is $29,280, and whereas the agreement for said maintenance shall begin July 1, 2024, and then June 30, 2025, unless agreement is early terminated as conditioned by the agreement. I move to adopt Resolution 53 of 2024, second.
Motion made to second it. I will say this, we've said it before, but I'll just, by whatever reminder, Miss our city group through LMA have been working really hard to get some additional cuts out of this agreement, and I think we were able to get maybe two additional cuts. I don't remember the price, the amount from last year, to see what the difference is with the number that's here now, the 29,000. So, Donna, I don't know, do you have any recollection? Was that, did they really give us that reminder?
I think last year they did, but I mean, I didn't, we got the same thing, they paid us the same this year.
Okay.
So they paid.
From last year?
Yes, sir.
It's a little better.
Yeah, so a little better, of course, not what we, not all that we wanted, but, yep, so anyhow.
And you know, like you say, Mayor, the reason we do it, because a lot of people don't know if this, if DOTD would cut the right-of-ways, they would not cut it as much as we cut it, and that's why we would, you know, the city would be growed up, so a lot of times, we go into the agreement to make sure that we're trying to keep the city looking good. You know, when you go out in the country, you got grass about three foot high, they would have the same thing because they only gonna cut it maybe four times a year, and that's why we take that agreement so we can maintain the city to make the fairways look good.
I was just about to ask that question, too. I think I had one, yeah. I'm glad you had it.
It's a big job.
She had a question.
I think one of the question, I think one of the question was, does it cover, does DOTD, DOTD cover out by the bypass, I think is what, by Nagus Central?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, okay, so that's one of the projects would be included.
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, all right, any other comment? All right, seeing none, Mr. Stacey, roll call vote.
Eli.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
P T.
Yes.
All right, that motion carries. Okay, two more items, and then the financial report. The next one is read by Councilman P T.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution Number 054 of 2024, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute change order number three to the contract between the City of Nagus and Dixie Overland Construction, LLC. to the contract between the City of Natchitoches and Dixie Overland Construction LLC for the wastewater collection system at Granite Court and Mill Street Lift Stations. Whereas the City of Natchitoches awarded the bid to Dixie Overland Construction on November twenty-eighth of two thousand and twenty-two, awarded its number Zero Seven Four of two thousand and twenty-two in the amount of four hundred ninety-seven thousand, four hundred and eighty-five dollars for the wastewater collection system at Granite Court and Mill Street Lift Station. Whereas on December twelfth, two thousand and twenty-two, the City Council approved change order number one in the amount of twenty-one thousand, three hundred and ninety-two dollars, making the revised contract total five hundred and eighteen thousand, eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars. Whereas on January twenty-second of two thousand and twenty-four, the City Council approved change order number two in the amount of forty-six thousand, three hundred and fifty-one dollars, making the revised contract total five hundred and sixty-five thousand, two hundred and twenty-eight dollars. Whereas on June twentieth of two thousand and twenty-four, the engineer issued change order number three, more fully described in attachment aid, whereas the contract sum would be increased by the change order number three in the amount of two hundred and twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and seventy-two dollars. And the revised contract total would be seven hundred and ninety thousand. Whereas the contract time would be increased by change order number three from two hundred and fifteen calendar, calendar days to a revised total of two hundred and ninety calendar days. Whereas the project engineer, Henry Schuler of Schuler Consulting Company, has recommended this change order. Whereas the city is of the opinion that change order number three is in the best interest of the city. May I so move to adopt Resolution Number Zero Five Four?
Second.
All right, motion has been made to second it. And I know, Council, when you look at it, you see the change order in an amount of two hundred and twenty-four thousand. That's a pretty significant amount. But you remember this was a nine hundred thousand dollar, excuse me, grant loan date. I mean, I guess it dates back a couple of years ago now, almost a couple of years ago now. And we were able to get some work done to the Granite Court Lift Station and the Mill Street Lift Station. Now, the reason for this, what you would call substantial increase is because this is a totally new project. And I have on the slide, this is to move the project, if you will, it's been complete. Matt can say something about that, I think, on Granite Court and Mill Street. But this is to provide improvement to the East Fifth Lift Station to some new pumps. So this is not the same scope, if you will. We were expanding the scope, we're getting more work done. Basically, there was some money within the grant loan left over because we got low bids of five hundred and eighteen thousand originally, so. Or, I guess, lower than five hundred and eighteen thousand, four hundred and ninety-seven is what it originally was. So there was some room left in there, so looked at this project, looks like something that, you know, we can do. All right, Matt, you got any additional?
Yeah, each one of these change orders were adding more work to be done since we had the grant loan. A lot of this is forgiven, so we're not even having to pay for it. DEQ is forgiving a third of this loan. So the more work we can get that falls under that nine hundred and sixty thousand that we originally awarded is the more work we get for free. And then the portion that is the loan, remember, that's, that's at a point nine five percent interest, so less than one percent interest. Wow.
Yep.
You just freed us good.
Yeah, I mean, I saw the number, I was like, what the hell is going on here, Matt? And so, yeah, it's a, it's a new, it's a new project, more improvement to our sewer system.
Correct.
Okay. All right, any comments here?
Lift stations aren't exciting, but you gotta do them.
Yeah.
It keeps things flowing.
Mayor, if I may, Mayor, we had an opportunity, you took me on a little tour, so I was able to see like, you know, what the lift station and stuff like that is, but can you explain that to like, to somebody that don't have a clue?
Well, the reason we call them lift stations is because they actually lift the sewer up to a higher elevation. So remember, sewer runs downhill, so eventually it gets so deep that you have to start pumping it. So you get an area that all drains to a lift station, then that lift station pumps it either to another much larger lift station, and then keeps pumping it actually till it gets to the sewer plant where it's then treated.
And they're all strategically placed, right? All these lift stations are strategically placed.
Yes, correct.
You know how many we got? You know how many in the city? How many do we have in the city?
We have fifty-two, I think.
Okay.
And this is one of the largest. This East Fifth Lift Station is one of our larger lift stations. It actually has twelve inch pumps in it, so the suction on that pump is just twelve inch diameter. So it's a big lift station.
And that's went over down from the schools.
Yeah, that's right, on East Fifth.
Right by the tax commission, right?
By tax commission.
Yeah, that's right.
Not too far from tax commission. So we have to get all of this to Laird Fletcher.
Sir?
Yes.
Yes. So that, all that ends up to, at what they call the master lift station, which is where all the other lift stations pumped to, which is right there on Highway One, kind of behind Lot Oil. And then that lift station then pumps it all out, all the way out to Laird Fletcher, to the treatment plant.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah, but important work though.
Pretty, uh, large system, actually.
Right. And much important work. I haven't been out there really since two thousand and twenty, but, you know, it's certainly important work. And we appreciate those employees who work in the sewer department. Okay? All righty. No other comment or question? Mrs. Stacy, roll call vote.
Eli.
Yes.
Nielsen.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
PT.
Yes.
All right, that motion carries. Last resolution is read by Councilwoman Washington Eli.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution Number Zero Five Five of two thousand and twenty-four. A resolution authorized the mayor to enter into a contract with the Cadence Insurance Company for Euclid Cassidy Package Insurance Renewer effective June the thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four through June the thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five. Whereas the insurance committee has reviewed proposals submitted for the general liability, liability, benefits liability, law enforcement liability, public entity management liability, public entity employment relating practice liability, auto liability, auto fiscal damage umbrella, and criminal insurance for the City of Natchitoches and recommend that the contract in the amount of four hundred ninety-five thousand, three hundred thirty-six dollars and seventy-nine cents be awarded to the Cadence Insurance for a period June the thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four and through June the thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five. Now, there, Honorable Mayor Ronnie Williams authorizing, power directing, signed all the documents necessary for the execution of this contract. And I move to adopt Resolution Number Zero Five Five of two thousand and twenty-four.
Second.
A motion made to second it. Steve, you hit that bullet point. It's your turn, Eddie Lee. That's a little inside joke with some emails we had. Well, go ahead, Ed.
Now, this is just renewal, it's the city's big policy as far as insurance goes. It's, it covers all those items that Ms. Rosemary just read. It's auto, law enforcement liability, crime, even includes the tenant user liability insurance policy at the event center. So this is one we do every year at this time, and it's renewing. We're still with Cadence as far as the agent, but last year and the year before, we were with Travelers. This changes it to Euclid, which is another large municipal type insurance company. The, the renewal from last year is going to be pretty close to the same. The difference is Travelers required us to use their third-party administrator. Euclid does not, and it will allow us to go back to using Hammerman and Gainer. And some of you may know Ms. Edith Ravette, she's the local person for them. So we can get back to having a local person work our claims instead of Travelers. You never had the same person twice, and you were always talking to somebody, neither Pennsylvania, New Jersey, Connecticut. And it was just somebody that did not know Natchitoches. And it was just, to them, it was just a claim over the telephone. When you go back to Hammerman and Gainer, you have somebody that will come here and put feet on the ground and go look at the claim and help you work a claim and talk to the clients.
What, what's the difference in, do you remember the difference in the cost? I see four ninety-five this year.
Well, the re, the expiring premium is five hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. This one is four ninety-five, but you do have to add thirty-nine nine back for the claims handling for Hammerman and Gainer. So it gets you within about ten thousand of each other.
But this one is a little bit more.
This one, yeah, just a little bit more. But we, the service will be a lot better and our claims will be handled better. And hopefully because of that, we will have some reduced claim costs.
Okay. Comments? All right, thanks, Ed, for the explanation. Mrs. Stacy, roll call vote.
Eli.
Yes.
Nielsen.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
PT.
Yes.
All right, that motion carries. We have our financial reports, second meeting of the month. And we typically have charts and graphs. We don't have those, so forgive us for not having those projected. But I think, Council, you, you have them somewhere. So, but Mrs. Clarissa Brown Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. So we'll go through these charts very quickly, just some stats year-to-date for our sales tax revenue. The first chart shows just like a pie graph, and you can see that the portion of year-to-date sales tax is at nine point, I'm sorry, at five point eight million for the City of Natchitoches. You also see on the next graph, it's a bar graph, and it just shows how we measure up year-over-year in a particular month. Now, this particular report is for the calendar year, so it's going to show you January through May. So you can kind of see in the blue bar, that's for two thousand and twenty-four, and that's kind of where we measure up year, a month over month. And as you can see, in May, we far exceeded the same month in the two previous years. So we're doing very good. As you can see, we collected one point one million dollars in sales tax revenue, a hundred and thirty-two thousand more at the same point last year. So doing good there. The next page, you'll see another just layout of the sales tax collections. Now, this is for the fiscal year, so this goes from our fiscal year, June to May. And this shows you our complete year on how we collect it by the month. So the variance that you see to the right, you'll see that variance per month. And for the month of May, we were up twelve percent, so we're doing really good. There is only maybe three months out of the year where we did not exceed collections when you're comparing it to the previous year. So our sales taxes are still doing good. We did have a meeting just to kind of discuss what our expectations were. Where do we see sales tax going? There is some industries, like some of the oil work that was coming, the pipe work and things that were in Natchitoches, that's kind of moving out. So you will see some changes in our sales tax, but the City of Natchitoches has been holding strong. So we're hoping that we continue to do so. The next graph you'll see is a collective review of the fiscal year. And to date, May thirty-first, you're looking at thirteen point eight million dollars in collections. And over that year, you're up three point seven percent. So not huge, but definitely trending in the proper direction. The last graph that you will see is just a quick glimpse at two of our TIF districts. One of interest, we know, is the hotel occupancy tax. We are up one point four percent there when you look at same time this year as May thirty-first as compared to last year. So we're up one point four percent there. And in TIF District C, you're up thirty-eight percent. So that is trending largely upward. So again, we kind of discussed what our expectations were for our sales tax revenue. And we're hoping that the continued tourism increases so that we can continue to see an upward trend. But we do have some work that's moving out of Natchitoches in regards to some contract work. So we're just trying to monitor that very closely to see what the effects are. So we'll keep an eye on that. At our last meeting, we also approved the tax commission's budget for the year so that conversation went really well, didn't see a huge increase there. The tax commission does do a really good job on collections and auditing, and they work with the city very well to make sure that we optimize our tax revenue. So we are very happy with the relationship that we've had, so. But that's my financial update. Any questions?
Well, I know we've lost, excuse me, I know we've lost several businesses here, so that has probably had an impact on this report or not.
Well, we haven't seen the reflective, you know, the impact from that yet because some of them are newly closed. Well, the larger, I say larger one, but we did have some fast food places closed. So we haven't just seen those impacts yet, but we have had some open. So we're hoping that, you know, if they don't go there, they just go to another one. So hopefully, we don't see a large decrease there at all.
What are you going to attribute the big increase in May to?
Well, it's, it's kind of up and down for that particular month. I couldn't really just say, because May is usually the end of the school year. You're not really traveling yet, so it just may be.
Automobiles?
Just anomaly, yeah, sorry.
Is it autom, automobiles?
No, not automobiles, because automobile sales are not up dramatically right now. Like I said, I think it's just an anomaly because the month of May kind of goes up and down. It's actually usually a lot lower than, than it is this year. So we did see increase. I mean, we don't have, we didn't have any new festivals or anything in town. So it just may just been roll of the dice there, but we're definitely happy about the increase there.
I would say, is the online, is that, is on a separate report or? I thought that that was pretty decently strong.
Yeah, and.
And I don't know if it's.
No, that's a, that's a great point.
That's something separate?
That is something se, well, it's not really something separate, it is included in these figures. Online sales, the capturing of online sales has improved dramatically. The number is not just astronomical, it's not going to fund, you know, the entire city, but anything like that. But it has increased dramatically because capturing those sales has become a little bit easier, and they put some things in place to capture those sales. So that is something that I can include in the report because it was very interesting to see the, how much it has increased. I think year-over-year, if I'm not mistaken, it's at least fifty percent from, yeah. Yeah, so it has increased about fifty percent from last year to this year. It has increased dramatically, and it's just because they, the efforts to capture those sales.
You said thirty-eight percent for TIF District C. Help me, I should know these TIF districts, but what is C? Remind me what C is.
I don't have my map in front of me, Mayor, so.
All right. You'll have to look at it.
Yeah, I have to take a look at it as well, but I don't have my map in front of me. But if I'm not mistaken.
Thirty-eight percent is a good number.
Yeah, if I'm not mistaken, that is the bypass, if I'm not mistaken.
The corridor.
Yeah.
That'd be C.
That's C.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
You mean, you mean Highway Six?
Yes.
Is that, is that old Highway Six? I call the bypass.
Okay. Yeah, Highway Six, okay. Well, that, that would make sense to see it there.
And that's where our larger number comes from, so that's why, I think that's the TIF district.
I think because of the graduation and stuff, a lot of people graduated.
Oh, yeah, you may have had a lot, that's, that's a good point. You had a lot of people in town for graduations.
And it could be a factor of the tournaments too, maybe? Because I know we had some tournaments.
Yeah.
All that kind of plays a role.
Yeah, it all plays a role. It's nothing like we could pinpoint to say that's continuous year-over-year type of thing, how we can do for Christmas. You know, you kind of know, you know, why it goes up.
Big increase for Christmas.
But, yeah, they just had a increase in, in visitors, so. Yeah, we will take it.
All right. Well, thanks a lot, a very clear report. All righty, just a few announcements. Our next meeting is on July eighth, and city offices will be closed on July fourth. Just July fourth, right? Okay. All right. Well, we got Destination Rock and Roll, NSU Summer Dinner Theater is back. I've heard some really good reviews about this, people were posting last week. So, yeah, five thirty PM is when that starts, and I'm sure there's a way to get tickets. But, okay, let's see what the next one is. Celebration on the Canes, so we've had two weekends, this will be the third. Well, we've had fireworks and Juneteenth, and then you had on Friday the Louisiana Sports Hall of Fame. I think they had a really good weekend. And, and this is going to be in celebration of the Fourth of July, so the Fourth is on the Thursday. And so the Saturdays just seem to be the best time to do it, when people can, you know, get away and don't have to go back to work the next, next day type of thing, okay? So it's free admission, there's going to be a band down there as well, vendors and all of that. So looking for another good weekend on the riverbank. All right, this is Brick Streets, Bites and Boutiques. This is going to be held Thursday, July eleventh, four through eight. All right, said join us downtown on July eleventh from four to eight. Evening filled with unique experiences, the life of all. Evening filled with unique experiences, the life offerings, explore exclusive store specials, discover charming pop-up chops, and indulge in, uh, sampling tasting. So seems like, I think this is the first time doing something like this during this time. So, um, yeah, we're encouraging people to, to go, locals to go. You know, a lot of times we, you know, we thank the tourists, uh, Front Street, but also have an opportunity for some of our locals to go and patronize the businesses that are down there, okay? All righty, is that the last thing, Steve? All right, there are a couple of other things going on in town, but download the Go Natchitoches app, and you will, uh, see some of the, the Zodico Festival this Saturday as well, uh, on the Fairgrounds. All right, we also encourage you to download Regroup. We're going to do a big push for that. This is hurricane season, it's officially started. Um, I think it's going to be something that we will have some activity. So we just want everybody to know at least what's going on, okay? All right, at this time, we're here, a motion to adjourn.
Mayor, so I make a motion that we adjourn?
Second.
Motion's made in second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Meeting is adjourned. Have a good night, folks.